So they had like a kind of controversial first draft of an abortion bill. And that got edited quite heavily. So explain that to me, what was going on?
So there's a lot. So we've seen a shift on anti LGBTQ bills in some ways. We have not seen that on abortion. That where there's still a lot of anti-abortion, anti-choice legislation. We had, for example, they've what they've gotten passed, almost completely passed as something called the Born Alive Act, which is completely a messaging tool. It is an attempt to make anybody that votes against it look like they're supporting infanticide. And that is not, that's not how this works. Again, tapping into fear mongering and lies. It's abortion is one of the safest procedures. And 95% of them or even more happen before 12 weeks. Even less happen before 20 weeks. So the fact that this bill says that if any fetus is born alive after an abortion, a doctor has to take life-saving measures. 99% of abortions are performed before viability.
Viability.
And so, and if there is any child that is, that is alive after an abortion, which doesn't happen, there's no reported cases in the state of Texas, none whatsoever. But a doctor is always going to take life-saving measures on a patient, no matter what. And so it also is insulting to doctors to assume that they're just going to leave any sort of patient there just to die. And it gives the AG immense power to prosecute based off an anonymous tip line. So it is a messaging tool for them to say that, to say that doctors aren't doing what they need to be doing, and that abortion is an extremely dangerous procedure. It's a, and when we just talked about, it's most of the time just a pill.
Right. So what has been the medical community response to this?
The American College of Gynecologists came out strongly against this bill because it is in fact not factually accurate.
And I see a lot of, there've been a lot of pushback from RNs who work in neonatal units saying, hey, we are not executing babies here. You know, these are babies who are born very, very young. And if, you know, if the parents want life-saving, you know, extraordinary measures on these children, they will do it. But there are some kids that are born, and there's really just, you know, no possibility that they're going to survive.
Well, there's also a difference between a premature birth and a child, like they're trying, this bill specifically targets children born alive after an attempt at an abortion, which is not, doesn't happen. And any, and if a child is born premature, then you're right, like they'll take life-saving measures. But there are some times when there's nothing you can do because it's...
And my concern is that, you know, you have a woman who decides to continue a pregnancy with, you know, a fetus that has no hope of survival, but she wants to continue that pregnancy because that's her choice, right? So she continues the pregnancy. She gives birth to a child that she knows is going to die probably soon after birth. And my concern here is that legislation like this would interfere with her right to make a choice for her child, to provide palliative care instead of intrusive medical interventions that will not change the outcome.
Any of these bills, all of these bills interfere with the choice between a woman, her family, and her doctor, right?
But we can't make people vaccinate. Yeah, I just want to make that clear because that would be overreach.
Yeah. So, so it's, it's, there's a lot, there's, there was, I think the bill you're talking about has to do with the capital murder. Is that, yeah, that's the one that...
They tried to run that up the flagpole.
So the, the chair of that committee tried to look, tried to make himself look good by saying, oh, we're just going to give, we're going to give it all a hearing, but anything that attempts to prosecute the, the woman is not, is not going to make it out of my committee. But he still gave it a hearing. And it was a hearing, it was ugly and disgusting because this is a bill that would, that says that if a woman has an abortion, she could be charged with capital murder. And, you know, in Texas, capital murder, you can get the death penalty for capital murder. So it literally is putting, would allow women to be put to death for having an abortion. And so it was a very ugly hearing, this committee chair who tried to make himself look good. Also though, made an intern with one of our partner organizations cry. Like, it's, it was disgusting and despicable. And the fact that, you know, this, this was, this was able to get a hearing and that they gave these people a voice who were calling for the death of women is despicable.
Well, nothing says pro-life like, you know...
Like the death penalty. And then when he said afterwards, when he said that he wasn't going to give, let it out of committee, and he wasn't going to give it a vote, they made death threats to him.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I saw the article on that. It was so interesting that, you know, you had somebody who was receiving death threats from the pro-life community for not supporting legislation that would promote the death penalty.
Right.
I mean, what do you even say?
At some point, you can't say too much because there's just, there's no, there's no reasoning. It's not reasonable. Having, like again, what I said, it's thinking too much about how hypocritical some of these things are just will drive you insane if you think about it too much. Because it is. And there's, and there's, to some extent, no, no arguing with, with people who are going to ask for the death penalty for women who...
But what's interesting though, is, is when you understand the religious motivation behind it, it makes perfect sense. It's, it's no longer hypocritical. Then it becomes reasonable because you have this idea of, they consider this a murder, and if you commit murder, then you should die, right? And this is all in line with their conservative brand of religion. And so they don't see this at all as incongruous.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's really concerning. But all of this comes full circle of why we should have, why there's separation of church and state. Because that brand of religion, and any brand of religion should not have impacts on public policy.
Yeah. Well, and I guess I wanted to get back to a little bit about Texas Freedom Network. Because Texas Freedom Network does a lot more than just legislation. You guys have been at the forefront of like the State Board of Education fights and stuff like that.
Well, you were featured in Revisionaries.
We did. So that was...
Not you personally, but the group.
Yeah, TFN. I think it was, it was right before I started my, my internship with TFN, actually in college, that was filmed. The Revisionaries is a documentary that was based off the State Board of Educ, Texas State Board of Education and TFN and some of the battles on science and social studies that happened.
Under McElroy.
Under Don McElroy. This was from about eight years ago or so. And it's, you know, they, I think that thoroughly embarrassed the board. So they have been quieter about their crazy. But they're still pushing really ideological curriculum. It's really despicable that in the state of Texas, that anything that is put in textbooks, whether that be, you know, we're about to come up on the sex ed fight this year. Sex ed, for the first time in 20 years, they're redoing the health and sex ed standards. But social studies, science, that there, there's no statute that says that anything they teach has to go through some sort of review process with experts and scholars. So as a result, they are able to literally put anything they want in there. And that includes, you know, we finally at the 11th hour got them to change this past, this past time that slavery was the primary cause of this, was the cause of the Civil War.
I was going there, right? Because they have inserted slavery back into the textbooks, right? So slave trade now is being put back in.
So it used to, before, up until this year, it was, like slavery was, it was, what are the causes of the Civil War?
Well, also the transatlantic triangle trade.
Then in another section, they, they use that term instead. And then they also listed what were the causes of the Civil War. And first was states' rights and sectionalism, and then it was slavery. So they thought they were going to fix it. After, you know, they've, they've put work groups together. And we've been actually in the social studies, we were very pleased with the work groups. It was actually just educators. Because in the past, they've put, you know...
Well, it's like, what, the three, I think three of the board members have to agree on somebody. That makes them experts, right?
Something like that. There's nothing...
David Barton, who has no degree in anything.
In the past, yes. That is absolutely true.
Against real experts who lost to his ideological perspectives.
Yeah. I mean, one of the board members on an issue that we don't work on, but they cited Nikki Haley as a source.
Yeah. Well, the other, Barton wrote a book that was so outrageously incorrect that even his Christian publisher backed off it. And then it was Glenn Beck had to go front the money to get the book published.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Because if it didn't finally get published, but basically the Christian publisher, their statement was, this thing is so off the rails that there's no way to explain this as an ideological interpretation. It's just flat out false.
Well, yeah, I think that some of the experts said that he just flat out made stuff up in that book. That there was, that literally there was not even a foundation for some of the claims he made in that book. That you could go back and say, oh, he misinterpreted this letter or whatever. There was nothing.
The board still quotes him though, as their source. Now, this is the board, not the experts, not the work groups, right? The work groups, they redid a lot of, they inserted things that the work groups of educators tried to strike, like that Moses was influential on the founding fathers and like a founding documents, like you...
That's like saying Aesop was, you know, Aesop's box and grapes was a big, you know, had a big impact. Yeah, the, just to give people some context, right? So David Barton is famous for, or infamous, depending on how you see it, for a website called Wall Builders, right? And that's his thing where he promotes that we, that the United States is a Christian nation, and that it should be reflective of Christian values and supportive of the Christian religion.
Right. And you know...
As he understands it.
Yeah. As he understands it. Yeah, he, he is very, yeah, he's well-known for amongst the far right and like is one of their saviors. Because he writes, he writes history based on what he wants it to be, not what it actually was. And then there's, he's uses a source for the State Board of Education when they are trying to insert these standards that are just factually inaccurate. You know, we had, we contacted this social studies teacher. He was a middle school social studies teacher who had his students as part of their, as part of their curriculum, write to the State Board of Education members and tell them why slavery was the cause of the Civil War. Because he had, he, it seems like, I would have loved to have him as my history teacher. Because he told his students, like, all right, this is what it says. It says states' rights, sectionalism, slavery. Like, I want you to do your own research and tell me what was the cause of the Civil War. So they were, had to come up with themselves. And the only thing, they came up with all this evidence for why, you know, slavery was the cause of the Civil War. And one, I remember during the debate, one of the board members said, yeah, states' rights to own slaves, so states' rights. And like, you just said. So it doesn't make, and, you know, we're really concerned because health textbooks are coming up. And, you know, they are, the health is sex ed and sex ed is really, you know, the state of Texas is consistently highest, one of the highest in teen birth rates, number one or two in repeat teen birth rates, HIV, STI rates. Not to mention, it's very, a lot of sex ed is very anti LGBTQ. They don't mention birth control. So it's, the state of sex ed in Texas is a mess. And so we're about to, in 2019 to the beginning of 2020, they're going to be rewriting those standards. So we're going to be working on those because, God forbid, that children learn, and kids learn about their body and about sex because, you know, therefore you're promoting sex.
It has always been really weird to me. I remember even when I was in school for the biology course that I took, we went through all the, you know, you could go through the respiratory system and the digestive. So you go through all of that. But when it got to the reproductive system, you had to go bring a note home to get permission to, you know, through this section and the sex ed that was involved in that. And this course is going to include, you know, sex education. And so you had to literally get a note from your parents saying that you were allowed to be in that class. And I remember, it's funny, because when I was in school at the time, it didn't really strike me. It struck me that the instructor was stressing it, but I didn't understand why. And now as an adult, looking back on it, I understand what they were saying. And what the instructor said, what our teacher said in the high school classroom was, I have a curriculum that I have to stick to. But if anybody has questions, please feel free to ask, because I am allowed to answer anything.
Okay.
And so what, I understand now, what she was doing was basically saying that she was restricted to strictly stick to this curriculum, but that if you asked her...
She was trying to get around it.
But the thing is, it was like, at that time, nobody was going to say, you know, I, I wasn't going to, you know, I'm not trans, but like, I wouldn't have raised my hand and said, I think I might be a guy, right? Like, no one's going to, you know, and is that a normal thing? Or is there, you know, is there something wrong with me? Or, you know, nobody, there are questions people aren't going to ask because people still get ostracized and bullied for a particular thing. So even for the teacher to say, you can ask, there are kids who aren't going to ask that openly in a classroom.
That's right. Yeah. I mean, and we see, you know, so with the state of Texas, the way it works is that sex ed, whether, one, whether they teach it or not, they don't have to teach that sex ed is not required. And it doesn't have to be medically accurate, peer reviewed. But that, and that just...
It doesn't have to be medically accurate.
It does not.
Which is absurd.
It's absurd.
I don't even know what the, like, why would you, why, I don't even...
So that's an attempt to teach abstinence-only far right, like sex is bad, if you have sex, you're going to hell, kind of, kind of sex ed.
Until you get married. And then they have entire blogs where people tell married Christian couples, you're supposed to be having sex, lots of sex, all the time. Your marriage needs this. Wives, you have no right to refuse your husband.
That's right. And, and so, I mean, we, every year, we try to pass a bill that just says, hey, if you teach sex ed, it has to be medically accurate, peer reviewed. It doesn't ever get a hearing.
How is that controversial? Like, that is so unbelievable.
Because that would not allow them to teach fear mongering. It would not allow them to teach, for example, I had a friend, and this is a very common type of story. I had a friend who went to, when she was in high school, had sex ed that, where they had a big class, and they asked for five male volunteers, one female volunteer. She got up and was the female volunteer. The guys stood in the line at the front, the women, the, she stood, and they gave her a paper heart, and she went down the line. And the men tore off a little piece of the heart as she went down the line. And they told her, for every time you have sex before you're married, you lose a little piece of your heart. And like, that's the, they wouldn't be able to teach that because that's not...
Yeah, because it's crap. Yeah. And what's interesting is, I was listening to NPR on the way over here. And they actually, it was this show that's on there called Wait, Wait, Don't Tell Me. When they do these little, they'll talk about something, and then people have to guess what are they talking about. And they said, so there's this thing that classrooms have been doing, and they're using a rose and a piece of tape and a piece of gum. And they said, you know, what is it that they're doing? And one, the person that was guessing didn't know what it was. And so they just said, teaching students what it's like when your education budget gets cut. It was kind of funny. But the reality was, I was surprised that it was sex ed in abstinence-only classrooms. And I was thinking, okay, you know, I'm very curious. So apparently, they put the tape on somebody, and then they take it off them. And then they put the tape on the next person, and they take, and they say, see, it doesn't stick as well anymore. Like, it doesn't work as well. Because it's just, you know, because when you use it on all these people, like, it doesn't work as well. And it's like, I'm thinking to myself, I got news. I could, I could put it on my arm, and take it off and put it on another place on my arm, and take it off. And it wouldn't work as well on me, right? So if your, if your goal is to demonstrate that, like, you know, sex with a single partner is somehow better, it still doesn't work, right?
Right. Yeah, that metaphor, yeah.
I mean, obviously, the gum too, it'd be like, that's pretty gross. But it's like, yeah, I guess you could save gum, like as a kid I used to, you know. But the rose, they did what you were talking about. They handed it around to the class. And they said that, you know, by the end of it, of course, the rose doesn't look as, as nice as it did when it first started.
Oh, I thought they were taking petals off of it.
No. Well, maybe they did, right? But they were just, this was what I was hearing on NPR. Somebody laughed and said, and then there's that poor kid in the corner who never got to touch the rose. He's like, am I ever going to get a rose? Right? And, but one of the things that reminded me of is what Jen always says, which is, sex is one of the few things in life where we literally, like denigrate experience.
Yeah.
Literally, in everything else, we are able to recognize that you actually get better and you improve as you practice and you do things and you try things and you experiment with something. You get, you become a better driver the more you drive. You don't become a worse driver. It's not like, oh, after the first time you drive, you're never going to drive as well.
Yeah.
Nobody will want to ride the car with you anymore.
Studies have shown that kids who learn about sex ed and are comfortable talking about it and, and aren't nearly as curious about it, actually delay having sex. Because they, it's not like, what is this? I'm afraid to say no. Like, as a woman, you know, if you're taught that, all of these things, but then you, and you don't know how to say no, you think that you're supposed to do it for the pleasure of your, of your partner. And instead of just teaching, teaching kids to have ownership of their bodies, and if you want to, great, here's how to be safe. If you don't want to, then don't. You don't have to. And it also, so, yeah, if you, kids that were not teaching sex ed aren't not having sex, they're still having sex. So we owe it to our kids to teach them and give them this information, so they can make the choices that are best for them.
Well, and that's, and my point is that, so I have a 13-year-old son. So, you know, this...
Relevant.
Yes. We have these conversations, okay? He's, he's had his own supply of condoms for a while. Not because he's having sex, but because the first time he has sex, I want him to already know how to use a condom. And so the way to do that is make sure he has them. And, you know, he can ask me if he needs more to practice. Or I just assume that he needs more, and just give him some more.
Just, yeah, because you want, you want fresh ones.
They do expire. You gotta...
And I don't want, you know, him to worry that, oh, hey, you know, I need to go ask my mom to get me some more condoms because I, you know, I practiced on all the ones I had. I don't want him to be weird about that or anything. So I just give him to him, and he does whatever he does with them. And that's not my business. But, you know, whether kids that have accurate information about sexual health, whether they have more sex or less sex, or no sex, or all the sex, or whatever, I don't care about that. What I care about is that they make good decisions when they're in that moment. And they have the information they need to do that. And so, you know, for me, as the parent of a son, we're having a lot of conversations around consent. And we're having a lot of conversations about condoms. You know? And those are the things I want him to know about before he goes into that. And also about, you know, what the girls in his class are going through. Because one of the things I remember when I was in middle school, our sex ed classes were sex segregated. And I get that you might want to do that for middle school kids. But when they put us in these sex segregated classes, they only taught the girls about female anatomy, and what we were going through in puberty. And they only taught the boys about male anatomy and what they were going through in puberty. They didn't teach, you know, boys about girls and girls about boys. And so there was still all this mystery and mythology going around about the other sex. And I think that, you know...
Well, and that also promotes like normative views, right?
That's right. Yeah. Well, and it's, you know, with, one, without, I didn't get sex ed at all. Which is sad that that's actually better than some, than people who got abstinence-only sex ed. Because I was not at least indoctrinated with like these, some of these weird ideas. But that doesn't mean it wasn't there. It was still not, it was still mysterious. And like, you're, you're still, through society, get these views that, you know, sex is supposed to be more pleasurable for the man than it is for the woman, right? And that's, and consent. And, you know, part of, part of comprehensive sex ed is consent. And that's so crucial to, as we're, as these boys are becoming men and going to college, we have to have this consent conversation. And we can't have the consent conversation without talking open and honestly about sex and sex ed and...
Right. And how people respond and react, and how, you know, not saying anything shouldn't be taken as agreement or consent.
You aren't, you don't owe anybody anything, and nobody owes you anything, right?
Well, and that consent thing is so important. And I think I mentioned this on an episode of The Atheist Experience about a month or so ago. But I was having a conversation with my son about consent. And I was asking him, so if, if you have a girlfriend and you've had sex with her before, and she gets drunk at a party and passes out, is it okay to have sex with her, you know, again? And he's like, no. And I said, well, you know, you've had sex before. She said yes before. Why not? And he's like, well, she's passed out. You can't have sex with somebody that's passed out. And, and I said, so is it because she can't say no? He's like, no, Mom, it's because she can't say yes. And so it's like, okay, he gets it. He understands.
Yeah, that's really great.
You don't, you know, 13 years old, and this kid understands more about consent than a lot of adult men do.
That's right.
And that's my thing. I, I really feel like the no means no mantra can't die fast enough. Because it literally means that you've already violated somebody. It's a yes means yes. And that's what it needs to be.
That's right. Yeah. So, I mean, that's, keep an eye out, because that's coming this year. I mean, we had, and the conversation has already started at the legislature. I mean, we were in a, there was a public hearing about some transparency around sex ed decisions at the local level, because they're all made at the local level. So I encourage anybody to get involved at the local level when it comes to sex ed. AISD has a great program, though. But a senator, a current senator made a comment that Planned Parenthood is in the sex ed business so they can increase their abortion pipeline.
What?
And it was, you saw all the jaws drop in the room. But these are the people that are making public policy. And it's absurd to think that.
Well, because, you know, when Colorado implemented their, you know, free contraception for, you know, teens and everything, oh, oh, that's right, their teen birth rate dropped. The abortion rate dropped. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. But talk about like far, like the separation of, lack of separation of church and state. It is the far-right religion that is, that is guiding these policies and this fear mongering around sex.
And it is just like a denial, just a flat denial of reality, and a flat denial of what humanity is. And this is, you know, just to kind of skip it back a little bit, it's like when you can't accept that human beings are an evolved species, that we are a social species, that we are a social-sexual species. When you reject that and you say that what is normal and natural for a human being, what a human being actually is, like the innate nature of a human being, is not what it should be.
Right.
And that's a flawed, fallen, mistaken, it's a mistake of, you know, instead of just saying, it is what it is. There, and I'm not even saying it is what it should be, because I don't think there is a should be. I'm just saying, humans are what humans are. And that's what you're confronted with. And that's, if you have, if you have a solution, it has to work within an understanding of human beings being what human beings are. It can't work with a solution of, here's what human beings should be, and they're not. And so we're going to punish them every time they're not what I think they should be, right? And this is what they're doing, because their solutions are all solutions to punish people for sex, not to really mitigate the risks and the problems that happen. Because that would mean acknowledging that people are people.
Right. Yeah, it's a lack of, it's a lack of living in reality, right? And, and putting that, your beliefs on somebody else, that, yeah, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be doing these things. We shouldn't be having sex before we're married. And then, and if you do, then it's sinful. And we can't, we can't talk about it in a public space because that would mean promoting it, instead of just dealing with the reality that this is, this is how humans exist. This is what teenagers do. And it's not bad. It's not sinful. And it would be a disservice to pretend that it's not happening.
It would almost be like suggesting that in order to keep from saying hurtful things to people, no one should ever speak. And when someone speaks, we punish them harshly, right? And we say, hey, you're not going to die by abstaining from speaking. It's not going to kill you to abstain from speaking. We're social animals, and we communicate. And human beings all over the planet have language. To tell a human being, the solution is that no one can ever speak, is just an untenable, unrealistic, you know? And it's like, it's not because people cannot not speak. I could walk around and never speak again. But that's not what I, that'd be denying an innate reality of what a human being is demonstrably like. And so for, to say that, oh, well, people, you know, she should just keep her legs closed. And it's like, you know what? You don't understand humanity. You don't understand what people are. You don't understand what human beings are. And really, you're just not up to competency to have this conversation.
Right. Well, it does a huge disservice. It puts the blame on women. But I would think like, it also says that men can't control themselves. Which I think is also really insulting to men, right? The fact that they are just these animals who aren't intelligent enough, right, to, to control themselves. Like, it, there's, it puts all the onus on the woman and insults men.
And, and this kind of gets back to the sex ed thing. Because people who make this comment that, well, if she has sex, then she's, she's consenting to a pregnancy. She knew she could get pregnant. There was this risk. And it's like, okay, that's, that's one of the reasons we need more and better sex education. Because a woman is only fertile for about two days out of the month. You know, 1/15 of my time out there, I might be able to conceive. You know, and, I mean, this idea that, you know, you should never have sex for the, for the other 28 days of the month, because those two days, and we can figure out when those two days are, you know?
Yeah. It's, it's this lack of, a lack of information.
But the thing is, even when we know pretty much when those two days are, there's still a possibility, you know? And that's how unintended pregnancies happen. And that's why we need to have better information so we can assess. And that's why we need to have better information so we can assess the risk. But this idea that you're blaming women for having sex, you know, when she knows she's only fertile two days out of the month. And, oh crap, I, I mistook which day it was, you know, or whatever. I mean.
Yeah, and instead, we're trying, instead, we see the far-right try to decrease access to healthcare, decrease access to information in sex ed. They're shutting, attempting to shut down clinics, even healthcare clinics. Bring it back to the legislature, there's another bill I wanted to flag, Senate Bill 22, House Bill 1929, that would, it's a preempt, it's a preemption bill, but it would bar municipalities from contracting with any healthcare facilities that have anything to do with abortions. It's specifically targeting the Planned Parenthood on East 7th Street here in Austin. Because the, the city of Austin has, is renting the land to them basically for nothing. That is a healthcare facility, it doesn't, that one particular doesn't provide abortions, but even if it did, so what?
Yeah.
That facility's been there for a long time when that was historically an underserved, low-income neighborhood. And they are trying to shut down that and any, and stop any other municipal governments in the state of Texas from providing healthcare to their communities. We know Planned Parenthood and other clinics go into these communities to provide vital services. And that they can't, they wouldn't be able to do that without make, contracting and working with their local governments. And so this bill would, would stop them from doing that. And that's just another way that they're trying to defund Planned Parenthood.
Meanwhile, the state is funding these crisis pregnancy centers, which provide no healthcare to women.
Oh, man, yeah.
They are, they are sucking up resources that shouldn't be.
And another point of hypocrisy, right?
They get a lot of state funding, too.
Yes, they do.
If you're an abortion provider, you have to provide information, right, on other alternatives. But if you're a crisis pregnancy center, you're not required to provide information on full, full range of services.
That's correct.
So it's like, if you're, if you're the, if you're the person pimping the incorrect information or the limited, or the, the, what is it, the, the half-truth information, you don't have to tell the full truth.
They are literally deceiving women, they're delaying, they're, a woman comes in pregnant, they delay and delay, delay her appointment till it's too late to have an abortion. They fear monger, they scare them into trying to convince them not to have an abortion. But that's, which is so deceiving. And they, they receive state funds for this. There was just a bill on that, on this.
That's disturbing.
There was a bill on the Senate floor yesterday, I think, I think it was, or maybe it was Thursday, that, you know, currently, they, like you mentioned, they are required to give certain information to women who are seeking abortions. Most of that information is completely false. But the state requires it. This would go even further, because they can give the information to the woman, the woman doesn't have to look, look at it, right? So this would require.
Counseling, right?
A third-party counselor.
Who doesn't have to be licensed.
So AKA, like, a crisis pregnancy center counselor to come in to, to counsel a woman who's trying to have an abortion through a legitimate abortion clinic before she is able to receive that abortion.
So my question to these legislators is, are they requiring this same level of counseling for people who want a total knee replacement? Because the, the, like, dissatisfaction rate with total knee replacements is far higher than that of abortion. There are many, many more people regret having a TKR versus having an abortion.
Well, and, you know, many abortion clinics, like I, we, with one of our partners, we did a, we did a walkthrough, we did a, they, they walked us through the clinic so we could see how it works. They counsel already, but they counsel in a non-judgmental, like, tell me how you're feeling about this and kind of way to make sure that, you know.
You're not coerced.
They're not coerced, but even if, like, you know, a lot of women do struggle with, like, they're, they're, they know they want this abortion, but their religion has told them it's wrong. Okay, let's talk about that, let's work through that, like, in a, in a non-judgmental way. And, you know, and also, though, if a woman says she doesn't want to have the abortion, they won't, they will say, okay, well, maybe this isn't right for you. Or, you know what, here, let's help you work through your, your, your fears of, of what your religion has told you. That already happens, because it's a compassionate, it's a compassionate place. And having them then also have to have a counselor that would fear monger and tell them, you can't do this, would be devastating.
Well, and I think another thing that's important to note is that there's really not a financial incentive for clinics to perform extra abortions. I mean, one of the things about the abortion legislation is that it's made it so difficult for women to access these services that organizations like Planned Parenthood and other organizations that provide abortion, they've gone to great lengths to keep the cost of the procedure down as low as possible. So there's really not a profit margin there. It's basically as low as they can get it and still provide good medical care.
Right, yeah, these, I mean, and even the, the few hundred dollars that it costs, a lot of women can't afford that. So that's why you have, you know, funds.
I was going to say, is this a good time to promote Lilith Fund or, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's several, there's a few, there's Lilith, there's T-Fund, there's a few, I know, I'm, Frontiera Fund that, you know, help provide extra, like, provide income to women for their abortions. Because it also, we have so many laws in place in this state and barriers that it takes more than one day. To drive a lot, a lot farther, multiple visits. And lose, so therefore, there's a lot, a lot of the times, lost wages. What are you going to do with childcare? Because a lot of women who have abortions already have children. And so there is, there's, there's all these barriers that we're putting in place. And you know what, if I, I am privileged enough that if I ever need to have an abortion, I can find a way to have one, because I could travel for one. And this, the way the state of Texas works, the barriers that we have in place, access to abortion is already not a reality for a lot of women because of the financial and time barriers that are in place. And that's why we need to work hard. One, I, I hope that we will continue to increase access and increase awareness and change the narrative around this, because the reality is, yeah, there's a lot of women who already, this is, that they can't access.
Yeah, and, and it's another one of those situations where the hypocrisy starts to make sense when you understand the underlying ideology, right? So when sex is wrong and pregnancy is one of those risks that also works as a punishment, as a natural punishment, like an STD, then you actually don't want to mitigate those things, right? Because those are the, those are the punishments put in place for doing the wrong thing. So you had sex, you got an STD, this is why we told you not to have sex. You had sex, you got pregnant, this is why we told you not to get pregnant. So when people say, I mean, not to have sex. And so when people say, well, it makes no sense that they claim to be about, you know, saving these babies, but then once the baby's born, they don't seem to want to do anything. It's like, no, it makes perfect sense, because the baby is supposed to be a punishment.
Right, that's right.
And the other thing is, or you give the baby away, which in my mind is, you know, then they get to take it to the Christian home, because they got the law saying that you don't have to adopt it out to a Catholic or a gay couple. So we're going to, we're going to take the baby away, put it in a Christian home. And then you get to grow up knowing that your baby was given away and raised by strangers. And so either, so their whole, the whole narrative is, you shouldn't be having sex. And if you end up pregnant because of sex, that's not our fault, you shouldn't ascend.
And you have to, now it's your responsibility to.
Deal with it.
To deal with it.
Yeah, oh, and after you give the baby up for adoption and wonder for the rest of your life, what happened to that child. You also still get to bear the burden of being ruined, because you had a child out of wedlock.
Like the narrative, yeah.